We are still waiting on a few commissioners who might appear by Zoom, but. First item on the agenda then is approval of today's agenda. Any revisions?
Is there anything that can be combined?
Nope, that would be too easy.
So do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Schoberg.
Second, Lystico.
Okay, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next we'll have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on August 18th. Any revisions, discussion, comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Parrish.
Okay, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes approved. Next, can we have the financial report for August, please?
Okay. This is Dornoff staff and. So far on the revenue side, we're supposed to be at sixteen point six percent for the year. We're at eighteen percent overall, so doing. Or, no, that was expenses, sorry. And then for seven percent on the revenue, although we haven't had any sales yet, we have some coming through, so that will boost it up. Plus on the expense side, we have all the stuff that we pay, prepay upfront, so that makes the numbers a little higher than they would be. That number, overall number will go down.
Any questions on the report? If not, do we have a motion to place the report on file?
So moved, Surfing.
Second, Schoberg.
All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the report is placed on file. Next is the time for oral presentations. This is a time for anyone who is here to speak on an. Item that is not already on the agenda. If there's anyone who is here to speak on a non-agenda item, please step forward. Okay. We will move on to new business then. The time is four oh two P M. And a hearing is scheduled at this time for request by PC Development, LP and Dr. Robert A. Behar to rezone approximately one point three acres from C two Commercial District to C two CZ Conditional Zoning District to allow for auto repair, an auto repair shop and sales located at twelve thirty seven Flamine Drive, the former Petco store. This is on pages thirteen through twenty-five of the packet. Can we? At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, overview map, aerial maps, notice map, site plan evaluations were mailed to individuals on the attached list on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Can we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved, Lystico.
Second, Schoberg.
All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that notice is placed on file and first we'll have the staff report, please.
This is Dornoff with staff. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood as the area is surrounded by commercial uses. Signing question is a former Petco retail store. As long as there's no outside storage or of interoperable repair vehicles or other vehicle parts or equipment. The request would not appear to have an impact on vehicular pedestrian traffic movements in the area. There are sidewalks on the west side of Flamang and on the east side, north of the driveway to their proposed rezon site. Although there is no currently sidewalks along Flamang Drive in front of the business. The complete streets advisory committee voted to recommend sidewalk be required when the retaining wall needs to be repaired or the parking lot repaired, reconstructed. The property is zone C two Commercial District, has been zoned since the adoption of zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding uses and zoning to the north, commercial zoning, commercial zone C two Commercial District. To the south, commercial billboard, San Martin Frontage Road and San Martin Drive, Zone C two Commercial District. To the east is commercial, San Martin Frontage Road and San Martin Drive, Zone C two Commercial District. And. To the west is Flamang Drive and commercial zone C two Commercial District. And commercial development was built between nineteen seventy-seven and two thousand seventeen. The future landing is mapped as next, this area is commercial and the proposed rezon would be in performance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area. The applicant is requesting to rezon the former Petco store on Flamang Road from C two Commercial District, C two CZ Conditional Zoning District in order to allow an auto repair shop on the property, which the primary, which is a primary use in the M one Light Industrial District. The building that is proposed to be rezoning has been, was formerly home of Petco, has been empty for several years. The building is also home to Midwest mattresses, Little Caesars, pizza and electronic underground. There's a separate property to the north that was formerly home to Jerry's Furniture that has been remodeled now, has a clean laundry location along with other spaces available. Parking requirements for use in the area is one parking spot for every five hundred square feet of floor area. The areas to be used by the auto repair shows to have ten thousand two hundred square feet of space, which would require twenty parking spaces. The total shopping center requires sixty-seven spaces. Retail stores only. Only areas required to be used by customers are counted, but the property appears to have sixty-nine parking spaces. Also, the applicants indicated that there will be car sales at the site as an auxiliary use, which would also reduce the number of parking spaces, but there appears to be adequate parking for the current uses. There's also eight spaces on the north side of the building that cannot be considered for parking minimums since they are shared with the property to the north. Because the proposed rezon is an area of other retail businesses, staff wants to ensure that the area remains a place welcoming to retail businesses. Therefore, staff is recommending conditions that will specifically state that no outside storage of repair vehicles or materials or parts, no storage containers shall be allowed and no major bodywork performed on the cars. And during tech review was noted that the building department will need stamped drawings for the change of use, which will acquire new occupancy permit. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by B C, B C P Development, LP and Dr. Robert Behar to rezon approximately one point three acres from C two Commercial District to C two CZ Commercial Zoning District to allow for an auto repair shop and sales located at twelve thirty seven Flamang Drive or Petco store be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have a negative impacts around the area. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. Their request would be, is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area. With the following conditions, the site is limited for permitted uses in the C two Commercial District and an auto repair shop and sales business. There should, will be no outside storage of repair vehicles or materials and parts. There will be no storage containers permitted. No bodywork on vehicles will be permitted performed on the site. And that when repairs are made to the retaining wall or the parking lot is reconstructed, sidewalks are to be installed along Flamang Drive. And we, you'll need to add the words is reconstructed after parking lot, so of that condition.
Thank you. Any initial questions for John?
Will we have time for questions later?
Okay. All right, is the applicant here or someone on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah, she's on Zoom.
Can you unmute me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you please identify yourself and your, your address?
Chelsea Curry. And you need my mailing address or?
Your business address is fine.
You can just use five 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 five, San Felipe Street. We eleven thirty-five, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero five six.
Ms. Curry, is there anything that you want to address with the commission or add to the staff report?
I just want to clarify that we're not doing any sales of vehicles. We are retailing tires and wheels. So it's all in a, in a like showroom area. There will be no vehicle sales.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a, it's a very clean operation. I actually wish I would have sent some pictures of what some of our other locations look like. There will not be any tires or anything stored on the exterior of the building. We'll have plenty of storage space inside, so.
Any questions for Ms. Curry?
Commissioner Trost. So just sales of tires and wheels, but not installation, is that correct?
Uh, no, there will be installation as well. We'll probably need four overhead doors. So they, they do the installation of the tires and wheels, some brake services, alignments, balancing, but no engine work. So there's no oil or any major body repairs.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other initial questions for Ms. Curry? Okay, is there anyone else here in the chambers to speak on this item, this agenda item? Okay, and is there anyone else on phone or by Zoom to speak on this agenda item? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Surfing.
So moved, Trost. Second, Trost.
All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Any motion or questions?
So first off, before we get too deep into any of these, should we be seeing if there's any conflicts of interest in stating those before we start votes between of the, of the commissioners, knowing we've got a?
Usually we leave that to the commissioners to come forward and recuse themselves because technically they should be recused from even being here.
At all?
Yeah, during the initial discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know if we should state that at the beginning of the meetings, just to make sure that if there are any conflicts of interest that we're having people do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good note.
I have a question. So with this having a food. A restaurant, oh yeah, sorry, did you?
Just straight over staff is just going to provide a clarification on that. Per the administrative rules of the Planning and Zoning Commission, at the beginning of each individual request, if a member is intending to abstain, they should indicate that and provide why. They don't have to actually recuse themselves from the room and actually they don't, they are allowed to speak. It's just that's why it is to provide that indication of a abstention upfront. That way, anything that a member who ends up abstaining would say before that is taken under that understanding of the conflict of interest. So just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just knowing that Little Caesars is there, is there, with food and auto repair being in the same building, is there any kind of concern around? Materials used, any? I'm just curious.
This is Trader with Staff. The Health Department is on our technical review list. We typically don't hear from them unless there is an issue and we did not hear from them. So I would assume there's not. They will be, even though it's, you know, part of one building, it's, you know, a strip mall building. So there'll be complete separation there, so I wouldn't anticipate any issues.
Yeah, I just didn't know what was going on underground and all that kind of stuff, so, okay.
Was there someone on the call that was trying to pose? A question?
This is Steve Trost. You answered it.
I'm sorry, can you speak up, Commissioner Trost?
It was Steve, it was Steve Trost. You answered the question, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions by the commission or discussion? If not, do we have a motion to entertain?
So moved, Schoberg. Oh, I need to read the. I would recommend the approval by B C P Development, LP and Dr. Robert Behar to rezon approximately one point three acres from C two Commercial District to C two CZ Conditional Zoning District be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request does not appear to have a negative impact on the conditions in the area, traffic condition in the area. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map with the following exceptions. The site is limited to permitted uses in the C two Commercial District and an auto repair shop and sales business. There will be no outside storage of vehicles or material slash parts. There will be no storage container permitted. No major bodywork on vehicles will be performed on the site. That when, and that when any repairs are made to the retained wall or the parking lot is reconstructed, sidewalks are to be installed along Flamang Drive.
I'll second that, Lystico.
Okay, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
And just to let you know that will, the city council will be setting up date of public hearing at their next council meeting and it will be at a public hearing on November seventh.
Thank you, Ms. Curry. Okay, the time is.
Thank you.
The time is four sixteen P M. And a hearing is scheduled at this time for a request by S K S Communications for a site plan amendment to allow for the construction of a new two thousand four hundred square foot office building in the P B Business Park District located north of thirty-one seventy-three Titan Trail. This is on pages twenty-six through forty-one of the packet. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, overview map, aerial map, notice map, preliminary plat and evaluation elevations were mailed to the individuals on the attached list on September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two. We have a motion to receive and place this notice on file.
So moved, Parrish. Second, Surfing.
Okay, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the notice is placed on file and we will have the staff report, please.
This is Andera's staff. Twenty-four hundred square foot building has a dimension of thirty by eighty. We'll have seven employees at this location. They currently have their location in downtown Waterloo, ten West Fourth Street. My staff does not believe that this use would negatively impact the surrounding area or land uses because they consist of commercial and light industrial uses. This is a post-frame construction building. And it's shown having an all steel exterior with three feet of wainscoting, which the wainscoting is usually a different color from the steel above it at the bottom of the sidewalls. This building is northeast of, and abutting thirty-one seventy-three Titan Trail, which is Google's one hour heating and cooling. And they have a split face concrete on parts of the first level of the building facing Titan Trail and Cyclone Drive, as well as their parking lot to the northeast of their building. And the remainder of that building is steel. Heartland Vineyard Church is thirty-two eleven Titan Trail and they have an ethos design on their buildings, or on their building, I should say, as well as some additional design elements such as a color stripe near the top of their walls. Directly across the street, Warren Transport is under construction of their new headquarters and shop. And that entire building is constructed out of tip-up concrete. Also note that all the principal buildings in this nearby area have some sort of ethos or masonry element added into their design. So we do feel that the new building should have some compatibility. What's, both either masonry or ethos or similar types of design added to it to be compatible. Would not appear this request would negatively impact traffic conditions in the area. It is on Titan Trail, which is a local street, but it is also adjacent to Highway sixty-three, which is a principal arterial. When the site is developed, sidewalk will need to be extended along the entire frontage of that proposed, or along that lot, I should say. To the north is builder, Building First Source, which is a building materials store, zone M two P Plain Industrial. And that was built in nineteen eighty. As noted, Google's heating and cooling and Heartland Vineyard Church are to the south, so on B P Business Park. Highway sixty-three is to the east, along with some light industrial on Marty Avenue, zone A one and M one, which M one is light industrial, then Warren Transport's new headquarters is under construction directly across the street. Pages are sticking together here. The site is served by all necessary public utilities in Titan Trail, which include a twelve-inch sanitary sewer, a fifteen-inch storm sewer and a twelve-inch water main. There's also a fifteen-inch utility easement located along the frontage of the proposed lot. And all the public utilities are within the right of way, but there could be some private utilities within that easement on the frontage of the lot. The B P Business Park is intended and designed to provide for a means of commercial and compatible light industrial developments on tracts and land on a unit basis, allowing for greater flexibility and diversification of the land uses and building locations. It is the intent of this zoning district that there be basic principles of good land use planning and they are maintained and that sound zoning standards are set forth concerning orderly growth, development, traffic patterns and compatible design and use are to be preserved. There will be seven employees at this location. And for an office building under fifty thousand square feet, that requires one space per two hundred or three hundred square feet of floor area, which they are excluding about a hundred and eighty-nine square feet out for mechanical and storage area. So that leaves about two thousand two hundred and eleven square feet for business operations, which equates to eight parking stalls needed. And they are showing nine stalls on the site. Setback is about fifty-five feet from the front property line. And they are showing a side yard setback of ten feet from the northeast property line. And at its closest, the parking area is five feet from the property line, which does meet the minimum setback requirements for a vehicular use area. So staff is recommending approval of this request for the site plan amendment to allow for the construction of the twenty-four hundred square foot office building in the B P Business Park, northeast of thirty-one seventy-three Titan Trail for these following reasons. One, the request would fit in with other uses in the area, which primarily comprise a professional office and commercial uses as well as some light industrial. Two, the request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. Three, would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular and pedestrian or pedestrian traffic in the area. And four, the request is in conformance with the future land use map and comp plan, which designates this area as business park. And with these following conditions, one, that the final site plan meet all city codes, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, except as specifically altered by approval of the site plan amendment. And two, that addition, that additional aesthetically pleasing design elements are added to the building to keep the building in character with other buildings in the area, such as masonry block or ethos systems on the building's walls that face Titan Trail, Highway sixty-three.
Any initial, additional, initial questions by commissioners? Okay. Is the applicant or someone on behalf of the applicant either in the chambers or on the phone or Zoom? Okay. Anyone else here to speak on this agenda item? All right, do we want to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Parrish.
Second, Schoberg.
All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is closed. Any discussion amongst the commission or a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request for a site plan amendment to the B P Business Park District for twenty-four hundred square foot office building and nine stall parking lot located northeast of three one seven three Titan Trail be approved. Such as the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, including not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera, except as specifically altered by approval of the site plan amendment. And two, that additional aesthetically pleasing design elements are added to the building to keep the building in character with other buildings in the area, such as masonry block or ethos systems on the building walls that face Titan Trail and Highway sixty-three.
I'll second that, Surfing.
Any further, or any discussion? If not, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, the next item on the agenda is a request by Plum's Auto LLC for a special permit to allow for expansion of an existing salvage yard in the M two Heavy Industrial District located at twenty-six sixty-six W C F and N Drive, existing yard at twenty-six thirty, same drive. This is on pages forty-two through fifty-six of your packet. We have the staff report, please.
This is Blank with Staff. The applicant is requesting to open a new yard location at twenty-six sixty-six W C F and N Drive, which they are calling an expansion to their existing yard at twenty-six thirty W C F and N Drive. The residence is located at twenty-six thirty-six W C F and N Drive and the salvage yard business is located at twenty-six thirty. The request would not appear to, the request would appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area due to ongoing issues with salvage materials being outside the fenced area. The proposed request would appear to have a negative impact upon vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area as the salvage yard to the south has a history of cars parked along the roadway. And this new site could also have similar issues being operated by the same owner. The site has been zoned M two Heavy Industrial District since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. To the north is vacant land and K and M Truck and Trailer Repair is zoned M two Heavy Industrial District. To the south is a residence, the existing Plum's Auto Parts and Drain Doctors zoned M two Heavy Industrial District. To the east is residence and agricultural land zoned M two Heavy Industrial District. And to the west are industrial uses, Power Engineering and Hydrate Chemical Company zoned M two Heavy Industrial District. The salvage yard ordinance requires that all salvage yards be surrounded by an eight-foot fence that is uniform in height and color and with trees along the boundary of said fencing. The western portion of the site in question is located in Zone A E Floodway Fringe Overlay District, which is a one-hundred-year flood plain, as indicated by the flood insurance rate map. The applicant is requesting to expand their current salvage yard located at twenty-six thirty-six W C F and N Drive. As the site is not abutting the existing site, it should be classified as a new yard request for the existing yard at twenty-six thirty W C F and N Drive. A special permit for Pat's Auto Salvage was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission March thirteenth, nineteen ninety-five and approved by the Board of Adjustment, March twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-five for the original approval of this site. The request was approved with the following conditions. The recycling yard is to be fenced in by a solid eight-foot fence by May first, nineteen ninety-five. A hard surface containment structure is to be used for the drainage of motor fluids from vehicles and no dumping of motor fluids or contaminants onto the ground and no contamination of groundwater is allowed. In nineteen ninety-nine, Ron Plum purchased the site from Tony Mervin, the owner of the Pat's Auto Salvage. In two thousand twenty, Ron Plum purchased the site at twenty-six sixty-six W C F and N Drive and started placing vehicles as part of the salvage yard business on the lot illegally. On November twentieth, two thousand seventeen, the city council approved ordinance five four two six, changing the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance. when it comes to salvage yards. The goal of the change was to encourage salvage yards to operate in a more sustainable way by applying the concepts of the Iowa Recyclers Association, I care program, and the applicant will be required to follow the new ordinance. The existing location has had issues with salvage materials being outside the fenced area. When salvage yard inspections took place from two thousand three through two thousand seventeen, vehicles stacked higher than the fence has been an issue in the past. The fire department had issues with access at, to the site at the twenty-twenty-two salvage yard inspection. The existing salvage yard at twenty-six thirty-six, W C F and N Drive does not currently have adequate separation between the residence and the salvage yard business. A twenty-foot rear yard is required for the house. No materials or vehicles that are part of the salvage yard business should be located within the twenty-foot rear yard to the house. This would also appear to be an issue with illegally placed vehicles around the house on the site in question. The proposed location of the salvage yard expansion is in an area that has been zoned as M-two heavy industrial district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance nineteen sixty-nine. In addition, the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area designated this as industrial. For the proposed new yard at twenty-six sixty-six, W C F and N Drive, the site is within six hundred feet of a protected use, a resident control home, which would mean it is not permitted. The site is under five acres in size, at least at less than two point one five acres after home would be excluded, which would mean it is not permitted. The site plan as shown would not appear to indicate a receiving area for vehicles outside of the fence, which could mean more vehicles parked on the street causing traffic concerns. The proposed yard would need to demolish the house on the site or separate it as a standalone six thousand square foot parcel, showing a minimum of fifty-foot access drive to back to the business site with twenty-foot setbacks from, with trees shown for landscaping along that business site frontage. Or meet all commercial building codes to turn the house into an office for the business use. The proposed yard would need to be uniformly fenced at least eight foot tall and have areas indicated within the fenced area for hard servicing or interior structures for removal and storage of fluid. The proposed yard would need to show required stormwater code needs, provide for easements within the fifty-foot wide access area for any separate utility hookups. Over half of the site is located within the floodway fringe, which requires the storage of materials and equipment that are flammable, explosive, or injuries to human, animal, or plant life is prohibited unless elevated a min- minimum of one foot above the one hundred-year level. That would mean that the entire fenced-in area would need to be elevated one foot above the one hundred-year flood level. Over, uh, the applicant should subdivide the business area from the house area to operate the two distinctive uses. A drainage plan and full site plan will be required for the new yard area. And the fire department mentioned at technical review, that access will be needed. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Plum's Auto LLC for a special permit to allow for new salvage yard in the M-two heavy industrial district located at twenty-six sixty-six, W C F and N Drive be denied for the following reasons. The site does not meet zoning ordinance requires as it is too close to a protected use with three homes. The site does not meet required minimum site sizes for a new salvage yard of five acres. At two point one five acres minus house site would be two point zero one acres. There are ongoing concerns of vehicles stored on the roadway without a hard surface receiving area shown on the site plan. The site plan does not show hard surfacing or a structure for removal of fluids, et cetera, as required for a new yard. The site plan does not clearly show the new property lines for the separation of the business and home. Over half of the site in question is located within Zone AE Floodway Fringe Overlay District, a hundred-year floodplain. If the commission votes to approve the special permit, staff recommends the following conditions. That the salvage yard ordinance follows new guidelines as set forth by ordinance five-four-two-six. That the entire area of the salvage yard expansion be fenced and that the fence be a minimum of twenty feet east of the easterly most lot line required to pit the house within a six thousand square foot minimum lot size. That the new yard needs a variance for a distance from three protected uses and for new yard size of two point zero one acres instead of the five acres required. That the new yard provide a fifty-foot wide drive be split off into separate lot from, into a separate lot from the house to distinguish the property setbacks and show a receiving area with hard surfacing and car parking lots for said area. That the site plan add in requires, add in required stormwater needs, landscaping requirements, et cetera, as required by the ordinance. That the site plan add in hard surfacing area and or structure for the removal of fluids, et cetera, as required by the ordinance. And that the portion of the existing house and no salvage materials or vehicles shall be stored in this area unless the home is demolished and the area is properly fenced.
All right, initial questions for staff.
Just a quick comment, um, we did receive one call in opposition to this request. And I, uh, Councilman Childs also vo- voiced opposition.
Um. Do we know the identity of the caller, or just?
He, um, he didn't say where, he didn't leave me any of that information.
This is Commissioner Wilber, I do have an, uh, a di- initial question. So on the map, the parcel that's in between the two, uh, is that, has that homeowner been notified? And did, if so, did they contact and either to state a position on this application? So I'm talking about the house that's in between the two colored parcels on the current map.
Yeah, they are within two hundred fifty feet, so they would have received notice.
Okay, and you didn't receive any feedback?
We haven't heard from them, no.
Okay, but that house is not owned by Mr. Plum? Okay.
Correct.
All right, any other, uh, initial questions? Okay, is, uh, Mr. Plum or someone on his behalf here? Okay, if you would like to come forward, um, state your name for the record and address, and then feel free to address the commission.
David Plum at twenty-six thirty, W C F and N Drive.
And do you have a response in terms of, to some of the concerns?
No, that's a little more extensive than I was anticipating, actually. Um, where I really just wanted to put up a fence to clean up the appearance of how it is now, actually, so. I don't think I have a whole lot to add, really. Um, the, I just purchased it through my late father's estate, so I'm not, I'm not responsible for anything that's previously happened there, um, beyond that. I don't think I have anything to add.
Um, this is Commissioner Riller, I have a question. The house that's on the front of the lot, is that currently vacant?
Um, it is right now, and I'm in the process, my sister wants to live there, so. I'm in the process of going through, getting power restored, and I hired, hired electrician, but so far, nothing's really progressed on that.
So in terms of hearing the concerns by the staff and in terms of the staff report, uh, what's the plan then, if sh- for that house?
I would almost, is there a way I could get a copy of that? Um, as far as being the setback, I don't, I didn't see an issue with that, and I'm currently working with the neighbor as far as, you know, I know you had asked if she was aware.
Okay.
And I'm trying to meet, you know, any of her demands, but we're actually working on, on her selling me a portion of her land. So they would be connected. But, yeah, I mean, my father had those cars across the front because people were illegally dumping and going back there and drinking, so. And I think the code enforcement had allowed that to prevent people from going back there, so. What I would, what I would like to do is put a fence up, but I would like an industrial fence, and I would like my overflow storage, really, to be at that location.
Uh, this is Commissioner Riller again, how do you get the cars to the back of the lot, then? Does it, it's hard to tell from the aerial map. Do you have to go through the house portion of the, the lot?
Yeah, there's the side driveway where I have marked in yellow in the aerial.
And then were you aware of the, the flood?
No, no, it was not.
Okay, so does that change anything initially?
Um, I would have to see what, eh, what exactly, I mean, what are the requirements for that, like? Um, I think that seemed a lot more extensive than I was initially thinking, so.
Any other questions? Any of the commissioners or, um, uh, people on the phone or by Zoom have any questions for Mr. Plum? Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, is anyone else on the phone or by Zoom, um, present to speak on this agenda item? Okay, anyone else in the chambers here to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Any other questions by commission, or do we want to entertain a motion?
This is Commissioner Swann, a quick question for staff, more likely than anything. So you, you laid out sort of two analyses of, of, um, if it was recommended for approval or if it was not recommended for the following reasons, you know, so those two options that we can go down. Um, I just want to make sure that, that we're clear on if, if it was to, if someone were to make a motion for the second option of approving it, there's, there's a number of conditions, there's those six conditions that require, seven conditions. They're required to be met by the, by the applicant. And it requires some substantial, uh, approvals through variances and so on and so forth. But there would be a part in the process, just to make sure I'm understanding it right, that they would have to come back and have that reviewed and approved. Maybe those requirements before it can move forward still, correct?
Correct, and any variances would, since this does go to the Board of Adjustment, any variances would be done at that time at the Board of Adjustment meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, this is Commissioner Wilber, so as a condition for that second option, should there be, or is it already included, the concern by the fire department with access to the property?
That is something they have, they look at themselves and inspect yearly.
Was that included in?
I don't know that it was included in the conditions, actually.
The very last one?
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
No.
But we, we could list that as a condition, or you're saying we don't need to?
Yeah, you can add it if you.
Number, it's number four. I thought it was in there. Four on page fifty-one.
Okay. So, this is Commissioner Wilber, if we, um, go with this staff's recommendation to, um, deny the request for the special permit, the applicant can always come back when some of these other conditions and other potential, um, factors have been worked out, is that correct?
Correct, and also, I mean, this is only a recommendation, I mean, the Board of Adjustment on the October twenty-fifth makes the actual decision.
Okay.
So, Mr. Plum can come with a action plan at that time. Lexi can get it, give him, get him a copy of the staff report and stuff, and he can come with an action plan at that time.
Okay, I have a question, so am I correct in understanding that the existing salvage yard isn't meeting all of the requirements that it really needs to meet, is that correct?
It, it's had a long issues, a lot of, for several years.
Is it today, meeting what it needs to meet, would you say?
No.
Okay, so like if they made updates to that and that was compliant and what have you, that might be a good step in the right direction to ask for more?
Correct.
Land, okay.
I'd like to make a motion. Okay, I will make the motion that we recommend, oh, I'm sorry, third, I will make the motion that the request by Plum's Auto LLC for a special permit to allow for a new salvage yard in the M-two heavy industrial district located at two-six-six-six, W C F and N Drive be denied for the following reasons. The site does not meet zoning ordinance requirements as it is too close to a protected use, uh, three homes. The site does not meet required minimum site sizes for a new salvage yard of five acres. At two point one five acres minus house site would be two point zero one acres. There are ongoing concerns of vehicles stored on the roadway without a hard surface receiving area shown on the site plan. The site plan does not show hard surfacing or a structure for removal of fluids, et cetera, as required for a new yard. The site plan does not clearly show the new property lines for separation of the businesses and home. And over half of the site in question is located within Zone AE Floodway Fringe Overlay District in the one hundred-year floodplain.
Is there a second?
Second, Joburg.
Any discussion by the commission? All those in favor, so of the, um, denying the request, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. Can we still get Mr. Plum a copy of the report?
Correct, Mr. Plum, um, so yeah, contact Lexi tomorrow, and she can get you a copy of the report. And as I said, October twenty-fifth is the Board of Adjustment meeting, so you'll be able to appear at that time and give testimony and, you know, come up with an action plan and whatever else.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request by CGA on behalf of Chris Bischofs for the preliminary plat of San Martin Business Park in the R-four RP Planned Multiple Residence District and the BP Planned Business District located west, the forty, forty-one Hirst Drive. This is on pages four, uh, excuse me, fifty-seven through seventy-one of the packet. We have the staff report, please.
This is Blank with staff, the applicant is requesting to plat the property in question for the purposes of creating a twenty-two lot commercial subdivision located west of forty, forty-one Hirst Drive. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood or land use as area being plotted is located between two existing business parks. There are no trails in the nearby vicinity, there are sidewalks along Bankers Boulevard. Sidewalks are shown in the plat to be located along the south side of Tower Park Drive and a trail on the south side of Fisher Drive. The plat will need to be updated by the applicant to show the required sidewalks on the west side of Hirst Drive. The area of the proposed plat is on R-four RP Planned Residence District and BP Business Park District. Surrounding land uses and their zoning are as follows, to the north is single-family homes, sound R-three RP Planned Residence District. To the south is Highway twenty and vacant land, sound BP Business Park District. To the east is Kimball and Beecher Dentistry and Den Herter Veterinary Hospital, sound R-four RP Planned Residence District and vacant land, sound BP Business Park District and CP, uh, com- Planned Commercial District. To the west is Commercial Uses, on R-four RP Planned Residence District and BP Business Park District. The Waterloo Air and Rail Park would include twenty-two lots and four tracks. The proposed lot sizes range from one point two acres to two point one four acres with an average lot size of one point five one acres. The plat is thirty-seven point nine acres in total. The proposed tract sizes range from point seven six acres to two point zero eight acres with a total of five point nine one acres of land dedicated to tracts. Tract A is de- is designated for right-of-way Tower Park Drive. Tract B and Tract C are reserved for detention, and Tract D is reserved for right-of-way of Fisher Drive. There were no additional comments at the Technical Review Committee meeting. The preliminary plat includes the following items. The preliminary plat includes the following items. Legal description, existing topography, contours, property lines, uh, date, North Arrow and scale, sanitary sewer locations, water system location, size of individual lots, right-of-way widths, street widths, building setback lines and adjacent subdivisions.
Any initial questions by the commission?
I'm not done with the staff report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The preliminary plat includes, or therefore staff recommends at the request by CGA on behalf of Chris Fischels for the preliminary plat of San Martin Business Park in the R4RP Planned Multiple Residence District located west of 4041 Hurst Drive be approved for the following reasons. The plat would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The plat would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The plat will create an additional infill development site in the primary growth area and with the following condition, that the plat has all accurate required information prior to the preliminary plat being sent to the city council.
Now, are there any questions by the commission?
Is, you said the Waterloo Air and Rail Park, is that just a, is that a, is that what it's actually called?
No, it's the San Martin Business Park.
Okay. It's just a typo and the, okay, got it. Make sure I'm, that confused me for a second. I'm like, what are we doing? I'm like, what are we doing with an airport over there? Yeah. Just want to make sure.
Any other initial questions? Someone here on behalf of the applicant? Or on Zoom or the call? Anyone else here to speak on this agenda item? On Zoom or the call? Okay. Any questions or motion?
With the, with the, what are potential uses of those sites, just out of curiosity? Do we know?
Mostly what's been developed in that areas, professional offices.
Right. I mean, is it, would retail be allowed, like, with what we're doing today?
Well, it's a pla, um, site plan specific area. So anything that gets built there would have to come back through the commission and the city councils, so.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Actually, I got one more question. I'm looking at this and, okay, I see how it links up with Fisher Drive. I just, I seen initially, it would have maybe made Fisher Drive a dead end at one point. But now that I looked at the more detailed map, I see that. I just want to make sure that we have traffic that flows.
Right.
Commissioner Shroes, I'd make a motion. That the request by CGA on behalf of Chris Fischels for the preliminary plat of San Martin Business Park in the R4RP Planned Multiple Residence District located west of 4041 Hurst Drive be approved with the following conditions, that the plat has all accurate required information prior to the preliminary plat being sent to the city council.
We have a second?
Commissioner Shirk. I second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is a request by Hong Lang Feng to vacate 60 linear feet of sidewalk in the R21 and 2 Family Residence District located in front of 620 Byron Avenue. This is on pages 72 through 80 of the packet. The staff report, please.
To start off with staff, the applicant's requesting to vacate 60 linear feet of public sidewalk, which the applicant had a contract to remove without a permit eh, in front of 620 Byron Avenue. The request to vacate a sidewalk appeared to have a negative impact on the neighborhood. While the homes on either side do not have sidewalks, it would be a relatively small infill project to complete the sidewalk network, which then have the direct connection with the sidewalks on Western Avenue where Habitat for Humanity constructed several, large number of new homes, all of which have sidewalks and connect with the sidewalk along Baltimore Avenue to the west. The um, site in question is owned R212 Family Residence District and everything in the area is owned R21, R212 Family Residence District, except for the former Irving site that Habitat redeveloped, which is R1RP. The applicant's requesting to vacate a portion of public sidewalk that sits in front of their property that they have had removed without a permit or approval. On August 2nd, an engineering department, an engineering department employee um, did driveway inspection. Driveway and sidewalk inspector went to the site to inspect the driveway and found that the entire sidewalk section had been removed. The contractor told the inspector that the applicant hired him to do a new driveway and remove the sidewalk. The inspector then informed the contractor that the sidewalk vacant would no, need to go through the planning commission and city council for approval process or would have to be put back. While the property on either side of 620 Byron currently does not have sidewalks, there are sidewalks along Western Avenue where Habitat for Humanity constructed four new homes on that side of Western, on the east side of Western Avenue as part of the Irving Square redevelopment. Um, and sidewalks on both sides of Baltimore Street to the west have sidewalks and sidewalk on Byron to the north side of the block. It would appear that a fairly small infill sidewalk project completes the sidewalk network in the area. While staff has recommended approval of some limited sidewalk vacates where there are dead-end roads or blocks with near sidewalk with no infill being likely. Staff feels that allowing a sidewalk vacate in this area would set a precedent, allowing homeowners to remove sidewalk sections that they, that could easily be connected through sidewalk infill projects. Yeah, with nearby sidewalks to remove their, making, um, if, if the sidewalks are removed, making future infill projects more difficult. During tech review, the engineering department agreed that the request should be denied and there would be a relatively easy infill project to connect Baltimore Street and Western Avenue. It was noted that the Complete Streets Advisory Committee have recommended denial of the request at their August meeting and at their October 27th meeting. They did um, add an, the infill project to their 2023 budget request. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Hong Lang Feng to vacate 60 linear feet of sidewalk in the R212 Family Residence District located in front of 620 Byron Avenue be denied for the following reasons. The sidewalk was removed without a permit. It would set a precedent for others to remove sidewalks and reduce the walkability of neighborhoods and make future sidewalk infill projects more difficult. Only a small infill project would be required to complete the sidewalk network that would connect with the new homes built by Habitat and with Baltimore Street and provide an alternative route to both Irving Elementary School and a walking route to West High School. And the Complete Streets Advisory Committee has recommended denial of the request and would be, and has now recommended filling that gap in their 2023 budget request.
Thank you. Um, this is Commissioner Wilbur. So the, if that infill project were to go forward, that would only cover the portion of, uh, where there wasn't the prior sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
So that would still be the homeowner's responsibility?
Correct.
Okay. Um, any other initial questions?
I'm going to abstain from this one.
Okay.
Yeah, because I represent Habitat for Humanity.
Um, any questions by commissioners on the phone or Zoom? Is the applicant here or someone on behalf of the applicant? Okay. Anyone else in the chambers here to speak on this agenda item? Anyone else on the phone or Zoom here to speak on this agenda item?
I think a couple there are, and they are the owners right there. They're.
Are you the homeowners? Oh, okay. Did you want to come forward and speak? Just state your name for the record and then your address.
Um, my name is G U N G, last name S U N, just the house is 920.
Okay. Anything you would like to add?
No, I just make the new, the, you know, the, the partner. And before I see the, you know, the second word is, you know, is not new one, that's a little broken. And my neighbor is don't have the, you know, the side word. That's my, my house. I thinking is nobody, you know, the use, that's the me. But I thinking maybe I take out because of very old.
Okay. So you were saying the sidewalk was all broken?
Yes, before it's broken.
Any questions?
I have a question for staff. When was the last inspection in that area of?
Wayne Castle Associate Engineer, I have filling in for the city engineer this evening. Uh, that would have been 2014. We were on a 10-year cycle. That was the last time I was in charge of sidewalk. At the time when we inspected this zone, I did speak with the homeowners. They had talked about getting rid of the sidewalk. I'd given them the details of what the process was. They did not follow up on doing a vacate. So the sidewalk's been there. We did require them to make repairs, which they did. Um, now we are 2022. Uh, their next time through would be 2024. So. Yes, different owner at that time is back in 14.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I just had a quick, quick comment. Um, I think it'd be, it would behoove the, the staff to make sure that we explain to the homeowner the reasons why in ca, in case there's any um, uh, complication issues regarding um, the infill sidewalk program and how this, how this affects that, that uh, if, if we didn't have such a program, it may not be an issue, but we do have such a program, in my opinion, um, for exactly these kinds of things. And uh, for that reason, it is an issue to have it removed, obviously, either way. But it's more important in this, in the circumstance when we have this infill program going on in the community.
And this is Commissioner Wilbur. So the permit for the gar, or for the driveway didn't then mention that the sidewalk was going to also be removed. Is that correct?
Correct. They only got a permit for the repairing the driveway.
Okay. Do we know if that permit was obtained by the homeowner or by the contractor?
The contractor.
Okay.
If we deny this approval, what is the next step in the process of getting that side? I mean, I think it's a great idea to have those sidewalks nice and be invilled. What's the next step after, if we deny this request to vacate? You said that you do have money in the budget for the infill on like the north and south side of that. What's the process of that, um, actually getting back in?
This is Schrader with staff. So just to clarify, we do not have money in a budget for sidewalk infill. The Complete Streets Advisory Committee uh, annually reviews and makes a recommendation, or I guess a request and recommendation for funding in the city's capital improvement program uh, for various complete streets projects, uh, which sidewalk infill is the primary emphasis of that. Uh, so the Complete Streets had a listing of, I, I, I forget off the top of my head, but uh, probably six, eight different projects that they recommended for inclusion. This came up, they revisited it and recommended to add this um, sidewalk infill on the surrounding properties as part of that recommendation. But yeah, we do not have funding at this point. Even if that project moved forward, as was noted earlier, that would not include this site. This site had sidewalk and it would be the property owner's responsibility to replace that sidewalk if their vacate request is denied. If the vacate request is denied, as I understand, the process moving forward is the owners will be notified of such and notified of the requirement to put the sidewalk back. They would be given a certain amount of time to do that on their own. I do not know that amount of time. I'd have to review that with engineering. But uh, if they didn't do that within that amount of time, then during the, the next sidewalk assessment program, the work would be done by the city of Waterloo and assessed against the property.
Thank you.
I have a, can I ask a question? Even if I'm, even if I'm not voting? Is that possible?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know. Um, and maybe you said, but why, why is it just the singular house that had sidewalk?
Do you, I don't.
Castle with staff again. Uh, from about middle World War II through the 1970s, city Waterloo did not require sidewalks to be installed with any new homes. So we are right on the edge of a portion of town that did not require sidewalks to be built. City rectified that in mid 70s. Um, all new homes were required to have sidewalks. These are those areas where we're in between. And these are our, mainly our, mainly our main areas for sidewalk infills.
So even though they weren't required to have it in the first place, we don't allow them to take it out?
Correct. Without going through the vacation process. It is considered a piece of public infrastructure. There was a good chance that, yeah, you had, you have to look at when the home was built. But there's a chance that it was likely built before the city said no to all requirements for sidewalks. So kind of that late 30s, early 40s, somewhere in there. But there are, there are houses though, that were built in that timeframe that did put in sidewalk. Most homes did not. There are a few that did.
If they voluntarily put it in, they still have to get permission to take it out?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. This is Commissioner Wilbur. Is there a way to procedurally go about this where we require them to replace the sidewalk if the infill project gets approved and goes forward?
Engineering staff will handle this through notices to the, to the property owners. So we can.
So would that look like denying the vacate, but?
Yeah, that, that's an interesting question.
Could we table this item? Okay, and get maybe a answer on that?
Can I ask a last question? Who owns the property that would have been in the budget to, if the infill project moved forward?
If the infill project moves forward, the sidewalk would be placed in the city right-of-way.
No, I'm saying, oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
Right. Yep. So the city would install it at? Just like you are currently required to maintain the grass from the property line to the edge of roadway, you would also be required to maintain the sidewalk.
So if, if, um, can the city just say they're going to put in sidewalk even if the homeowners don't want it?
There is a process in the city code to have a council approve sidewalk projects.
Regardless if the homeowners want them or not?
Correct. I believe it's under section 7 dash 2 of the city code of ordinances.
Could the neighborhood show up and oppose and, just out of curiosity?
They could.
Okay.
At this moment.
Well, just one more question then. Just technically, if they were required to put in a sidewalk now, an infill project went forward later, they would have to meet some kind of standard of where they put it back, that it would line up with whatever the rest of the infill plan is?
Correct. So the current specifications for sidewalk location are the back of sidewalk is one foot from the property line. So it would go back essentially in the same place that it was. And then the new sidewalk would need to match with the existing sidewalks on all ends. And when we do these infills, we try to align. And when we do these infills, we try to align them, make sure that they connect from driveway to driveway where they have the sidewalk sections. Sometimes they're not all in the right place, but we do what we can to make sure that they are in the right of way.
I will make a motion to table this item. That's Lystico.
Is there a second?
Second, Showberg.
Hey, any discussion?
Yes, Commissioner Lystico. I don't have to abstain from this because of Habitat for Humanity. I did volunteer one time and I built a house over there in that area and I like to drive by that community. It's only about two to four blocks away from where I live. And so I drive by there and I go, whoa, I, I helped build that house in that area. And I see that area full of children. And one of the biggest things that keeps children safe, especially as they get a little bit older and start walking up the street to West High, is sidewalks. But I also think it's kind of silly to build just one lot of sidewalk right now and be super aggressive about it when we could do it all at once and probably make things line up a little bit better anyway. So that's why I made this motion.
This is Commissioner Wilber. Obviously, I don't know the condition of the previous sidewalk, but it can also be a hazard if it isn't maintained properly. So to add on to your comments, while we, I obviously support the mission of the Complete Streets, we also want to make sure we don't leave hazardous conditions as well, so. Only other thing I would say too, I don't, I'm not on the complete streets all the time. I understand the importance of sidewalk, but at the same time, there's lots of sidewalk right here. There, you know, I can't not write on that side, but I mean, there's plenty of sidewalk within close distance, I think, for, for kids to traverse safely, I'm guessing to school. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know if I would make that be a sidewalk for no reason either.
I, I agree with.
Go ahead, sorry.
I, I agree with, with Commissioner Wilber and, and the other commissioners who commented on, you know, it, yeah, it, it may be policy, but to have a single lone sidewalk, it wasn't a usable asset by the city of Waterloo as it was. And I put in my mind is, is did we lose, did the city of Waterloo lose an asset by having this removed illegally? And it wasn't a usable asset in my, in my opinion. Therefore, there's no loss. Therefore, if there's a way to have this taken care of as part of the infill, Complete Streets later on, I'd, I'd be favoring that, that option. For that reason, I'd like to see it table also, to find out if it's possible.
Any additional, additional discussion? Okay, but so the motion is to currently table this agenda item then. All those in favor stayed eye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, none opposed and one abstention. Thank you. What we are going to do is we are going to come back to this item at a, a future media, uh, meeting to talk and figure out what other options we can put in place. So we will come back to this. We haven't made a recommendation today. So we'll be in touch in terms of when the future uh, meeting is to come back to this. So if you have questions in the meantime, please contact staff, okay?
I have a question. You know, it's now is I can keep now, the now, and I need a refund the same before, the second word, you know me?
Can you clarify a little bit what your question is?
I just question, is now is I make the, you know, I take the, I take the out of the second word and now is okay?
We're going to come back to that and figure out what we can do. So right now, we haven't made a decision. We're going to come back to it with, we're going to get some more information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request by Raymond Shepherd to vacate a city-owned alley right of way in the R two, one and two family residence district located north of one oh eight Bishop Avenue.
This is Blank with staff. Requested by Raymond Shepherd to vacate nine thousand five hundred and sixty square feet of alley. The request to vacate will not have a negative impact on, upon the surrounding neighborhood. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular traffic in the area as the area to be vacated is not being used as city right of way. The site is owned R two, one and two family residence district and has been zoned as such since being rezoned from M one light industrial district on November eighteenth nineteen ninety-six. Neighboring land uses and their zoning are as follows. To the north is vacant land and residences on R two, one and two family residence district. To the south is vacant land, zoned M one light industrial district. To the east and to the west are residences, zoned R two, one and two family residence district. An eight inch sanitary sewer is located under Bishop Avenue and a storm sewer is located westerly of the Ogden Avenue right of way line. A twenty-five foot utility easement wanting to be retained over the storm sewer area. The applicant is requesting to vacate an approximately nine thousand five hundred and sixty square foot alley located north of one oh eight Bishop and twenty-two thirty-seven Osage Drive to place a pool and deck in the area. The applicant owns the property at one oh, one oh eight Bishop and the property to the north. A storm sewer is located westerly of the Ogden Avenue right of way line and runs parallel to Ogden Avenue. It is within the alley being vacated, therefore a twenty-five foot easement will need to be maintained over the subject storm sewer area. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to vacate city-owned right of way in the R two, one and two family residence district located north of one oh eight Bishop be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have negative impact the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area and the area to be vacated is not, is not needed for right of way. And subject to the following condition, that a twenty-five foot utility easement will be man, will be retained over the storm sewer located westerly of the Ogden Avenue right of way line.
Any questions for staff? Okay. Is the applicant here or somebody on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Before and state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Raymond Shepherd. Live at one oh eight Bishop Avenue. And I'm here asking any questions from y'all?
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Shepherd? Do you, do you have any plans to at all separate or sell off that extra parcel?
That's why I want to put them together.
You're going to put them together?
Actually ought to vacate the alleyway.
Mm-hmm, so they can.
Yep.
Any questions from commissioners on the phone or Zoom? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this agenda item?
I do have my neighbors, the two neighbors that want to.
That signed the intent? Okay. If you would like to come forward and say something, you can just state your name and your address for the record.
Connie Johnson, twenty-two thirty-five Osage Avenue. I have no complaint that he has that bit of parcel. Now, when he gets that part, the next part of that alleyway that would go to Ogden, that would be me and, well, Ryan here, he's in part of that. Does that, now what happens with that part of that land? Because that won't be used ever again as an alley, right?
No, it's just.
Leading up to Ogden.
Between the two homes.
Huh?
So you're west of Ogden?
They're on Ogden.
Schrader with staff. Yeah, clarify which section you're talking about, west of Ogden or east of Ogden?
I would be west of Ogden.
Okay, so that's within the area that's part of the vacate request. So you must have already signed the intent to vacate and the request to purchase your portion.
And we, if we, we don't have to purchase that, we have a right to purchase that? Is that what you're saying?
Well, so the city of Waterloo has a policy, when we're vacating alleys, that we vacate entire segments from a street to a street. We won't vacate just a portion. So we need to vacate the whole thing and we need that to be conveyed to someone. So we require that all abutting property owners sign an intent to vacate form so that we know that they're not objecting to the vacate request and providing indication if they want to buy the, the portion that they would have the right to, which is the half of the alley abutting the land that they own. Or if they don't want to, and if they don't want to, that then there's another property owner with, that abuts the alley that would be buying it so that it'll all be disposed. So if you change your mind to not purchase your portion, we would need one of the other two owners to purchase it or the entire thing will fall through because we can't have it where there's just a portion that would remain city.
Oh, so the whole alleyway has to be purchased?
Yes.
But this is what he's doing, correct?
He's proposing to vacate the entire thing. The westerly portion of it, abutting their land on both sides would be conveyed to him. And the current proposal, based on the intent to vacate forms that we got, was that of the other two, the, the, the other, and the far easterly end would be split in two with the north half going to the north property owner and the south half going to the south property owner. There was an intent to vacate and an offer to purchase, including an amount listed on that form.
Right here.
Right there.
Right there.
I think it was two fifty, correct? Right, it was two fifty, yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this agenda item? Did any of the other neighbors want to speak on this agenda item? Okay, okay. Anyone else on the phone or by Zoom to speak on this agenda item? Okay. Do we have any additional questions or a motion?
This is Showberg. I'll make a motion that we recommend the vacate of the city-owned right of way in the R two, one and two family residence district located north of one oh eight Bishop Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. And the area to be vacated is not needed for right of way with the following condition, that a twenty-five foot utility easement be retained over the storms who are located westerly of the Ogden Avenue right of way line.
There a second? Second, Spanish. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor stayed eye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And they'll be in discussion, they'll be in contact with you once because they have to discuss the sale of property and before it goes to city council.
If the council meeting, it's going to be notified.
Yeah, we notify.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request by Cedric Kulp to vacate a city-owned alley right of way in the R two, one and two family residence district located south of five hundred Ricker Street. Pages ninety-four to one oh six of your packet.
This is Blank with staff. The request by Cedric Kulp to vacate one thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet of alley. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular traffic in the area as the area to be vacated appears to have minimum use as city right of way. The site is owned R two, one and two family residence district and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Neighboring land uses and their zoning are as follows. To the north is residences, zoned R two, one and two family residence district. To the south is vacant land and residences, zoned R two, one and two family residence district. And to the east and west is residences, zoned R two, one and two family residence district. The applicant is requesting to vacate an approximately one thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet of alley located south of five hundred Ricker, five oh six Ricker and five twelve Ricker Street. There are no other known utilities in the vacay area other than the overhead electric, but an easement would need to be retained over the overhead line. The alley will not be closed off completely as there is a point of access along Peak Street and another point of access along North Barclay Street, sort, south of the vacay area. Therefore, staff recommends that the request to vacate city-owned alley right of way in the R two, one and two family residence district located south of five hundred Ricker Street be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. Area to be vacated is not needed for right of way and subject to the following condition, that a utility easement be retained over the vacay area.
Any initial questions? All right, who owns the parcels? On the south, is that the south side? Or behind?
I would say the south side of the vacay area, who owns that parcel? Is it the same owner?
It is not the same owner, no.
They're different owners. And then the other property owners want the property.
How wide are those two separate parcels? Do you know the dimensions?
I want to say fifty feet, maybe. But I could be incorrect on that.
How close, are these, these are pretty, let's see, where are the new Hawkeye houses in comparison to where we're at here?
I think they're a block to the west. Possibly two.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking is if there's ever a future develop, I mean, I know that the city and Hawkeye are still working in this area. If there was future development on those lots, you know, having, if there was a garage put off the back or something, I mean, it would have, it would be limit, you'd limit it somewhat where that could be placed. It's not real wide, so what would happen to the approach? Would that just stay or would that have to get taken out?
Castle with staff. If they're not going to use the approach or the alley, we would want it removed. If you look to the southeast, over on the adjoining street to the east of this block, portion of that southerly part of the alley was vacated. The homeowner ended up using that as part of their driveway, so they rebuilt that. If they're not going to use this alley, we would want that vacated or removed, that approach.
And I'm sorry, you said it was fifty feet was the dimension there?
The lots are forty-seven and forty-seven point three for the two lots to the south.
Okay. I mean, what do you think? Are there separate owners on those two parcels, though? The two separate owners?
Castle with staff, they are the same owner, the same owner owns the two lots to the south.
Are you the applicant? Would you like to come forward, state your name and address for the record?
My name is Cedric Kulp and five hundred Ricker Street is my address.
Anything you might to add?
Well, the neighbor that owns those two parcels, he's owned that for years, as long as I've been there, over twenty years. So that's been the same person and nobody ever used the alley. And I just figured I wanted to purchase it because I take care and do the upkeep of it and I've been doing it ever since I lived.
People throw garbage in there, they throw their yard waste in there. We sort of keep our property up in that area. But there's sort of a low. But it's sort of a low-grade area, so we try to keep ours up. So we want to get that part, so they can't drive through there and dump their garbage and stuff in there, because it's right in the back of our house.
Yeah.
And then we have to get it out of there and pay for somebody to pick it up. But Ricky Moses owned those two other lots.
Yeah, that big open area, he owns that.
And he said he had no problem.
Yeah, he signed off.
Yeah, he signed off, and two more neighbors said they didn't have any problem, they didn't want to clean the mess up.
And just for our minutes, can you identify, can you state your name for the record? Okay, thank you. Any questions for the Kulp's? Any questions from commissioners online or by phone? Okay. Anyone else here to speak on this agenda item? All right. Thank you. Yes.
Trust like to make a motion?
Oh, hold on one moment.
Real quick, the trader with staff, I was just going to point out that, you know, the, the aerial shows kind of the two different shadings, and we're only vacating that one, the yellowish on that aerial. And although that looks kind of odd, and like, you know, we're creating, you know, a stub alley, there is still technically a through alley right-of-way. There's not an open alley all the way through there, but there's not an open alley through this portion that we're vacating anyway. So if in the future, an alley was decided to be needed to go through this area, there is still right-of-way that will remain, creating that kind of S path there. It's a little abnormal, but we felt it did meet policy as not creating a dead-end alley.
So if you guys were to, if somebody was to come with a plan to build new construction there, where would you recommend they would put the garage?
The trader with staff, we would recommend they put the garage along the side or back behind the house with a driveway still off the street. If they were proposing alley access, we would have to review that. But it, it's the, it's not an open alley now. And the city doesn't, just because you have a property that has alley right-of-way, doesn't mean the city will open an alley. Generally speaking, we try and avoid it. We don't really typically want more.
So you're saying the area to be vacated right now is not an open alley?
Correct.
Nor is the
The north-south one.
Shaped, or whatever that thing is, that the other part is not open either.
Right, the, 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 the east-west segment farther to the south off of Barclay is open, but I think it's open more of as, like a private driveway than, I don't know that it's actually maintained like an actual public alley.
Okay.
But there is an open path there. There is no opened path in the north-south segment. And there's a limited open path in the east-west segment on the east side. I don't, I don't know what that's, next north-south street is there, but and there's the approach on the west end, but not, then it's not opened in the middle.
Commissioner, I have a quick question for staff, for staff, sorry about that. I think there's a little bit of a delay, and I apologize. Regarding those other, the areas that were shown sort of in blue, the area that is not being requested for vacated, was that question put forth to the neighboring property owners and with the city to just maybe try and vacate all this at once? Or, or was that not entertained?
This is trader with staff. It effectively was not entertained. It would have been the applicant's responsibility to seek out every abutting property owner along there as well, and have them sign an intent to vacate form. So they chose to just vacate. I, I think the initial request was just the portion of abutting their property, and they were notified that that would not meet policy. We have to vacate so we're not creating a dead-end stub. And although it's a little bit unusual, at least vacating what's in yellow doesn't create the dead-end stub. And when we say dead-end stub, that's not based on what's open and not open, just dead-end right-of-way. There is still the right-of-way there if an alley was decided to go through what remains.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to recommend the request to vacate city-owned alley right-of-way in the R2, 1 and 2 Family Residence District located south of 500 Ricker Street. Subject to the following conditions, the utility easement be retained over the vacated area.
I will second that, Lystico.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for being patient, too.
And we'll be in contact with you about the next steps. Yeah.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request by Gregory Schreiber for an encroachment agreement to allow for the construction of a detached structure, four foot into an eight-foot utility easement located in the R1 and, 1 and 2 Family Residence District located at nine twenty-eight Loretta Avenue. You have the staff report, please.
Okay, yeah, this is Heiburger with the staff report. And, yeah, I just want to note that this might have been an older staff report, but it's just a regular easement, it's not a utility easement. So I just wanted to point that out. This is a request, but yeah, the, the applicant is requesting the approval of encroachment agreement to allow for the placement of an eighteen-by-twenty-four garage to extend four feet into a regular easement. The request is not anticipated to negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood or land use. The lot in question is Zon R2, 1 and 2 Family Residence District and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. Surrounding land uses and their, yeah, basically, north, southeast and west is residential development, Zon R2, 1 and 2 Family Residence District. The adjacent surrounding properties are residential that were constructed during the nineteen fifties. The encroachment will not impact drainage in the area. No portion of the encroachment area is located within a special flood hazard area. There is overhead electric within the encroachment area. There is a ten-foot storm sewer, eight-inch storm sewer underneath Loretta Avenue, but neither of these utilities are located within the encroachment area. The existing fourteen-by-twenty garage was built within the easement back in nineteen fifty-eight, before the city of Waterloo and Planning and Zoning Department. The proposed eighteen-by-twenty-four garage will be placed at the same location as a former garage. It should also be noted that there are, you know, eight-foot utility easement along east and south. There's easements along the east and south property lines. The location of these utility easements, you know, make it rather difficult to place a garage in the lot. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the request for an encroachment agreement to allow for a garage to extend four feet into uneasement located at nine-two-eight Loretta Avenue. It'd be approved for the following reasons. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area. There's already an existing fourteen-by-twenty garage that has been located at that, within that easement since nineteen fifty-eight. And just subject to a signed and executed encroachment agreement, which we currently have.
And just a note, Mid-American, this was discussed with Mid-American, and they were okay with this encroachment agreement. Since it's their power lines along the encroachment.
Any other questions for staff? And there is no one else in the chambers, and I don't think anyone else on the phone. Any discussion or? Okay, sorry. Or a motion?
This is Schoburg. I'll make a motion to approve the request for an encroachment agreement to allow for a garage to extend four foot into utility easement located at nine twenty-eight Loretta Avenue be approved with the following condition, assigned and executed encroachment agreement.
One second, Parrish. Any discussion? All those in favor, state aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, next item on the agenda is a request by Nazad Jazar-Rubic for an appeal to the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on city-owned right-of-way to allow for parking of vehicles on a sixteen-foot by one hundred and forty-foot, two thousand two hundred and forty square feet section of city right-of-way at fourteen hundred Blackhawk Street. You have the staff report, please.
Yeah, the applicant is requesting approval of an appeal to allow for parking of vehicles on the sixteen-by-one-forty-two thousand two hundred and forty square foot feet section of city right-of-way. Would appear that the request would not appear to have a negative impact on the area. Other businesses along other streets in the area appear to utilize parking in the city right-of-way and have for some time. The proposed request could have a negative impact on traffic in the area. Allowing parking in the right-of-way would appear to create a situation where cars are forced to park back out into the road. The street in question would appear to be a low-traffic street without much through-traffic as the street only has two, two through blocks of traffic as most north-south, the traffic utilizes Eleventh Street. Engineering is required that the paved area will have to maintain, you know, twenty-foot minimum clear zone from the intersection of the streets, which would require that portion of the pavement that was installed with, you know, proper approvals be removed. The nearest trail is two eighteen trail, which is located approximately three hundred feet to the south. The area in question is Zon M1 Light Industrial District and has been as such since the adoption of zoning ordinance number two-four-seventy-nine. Everything north, southeast and west is also Zon M1 Light Industrial District. Adjacent surrounding area properties were developed in between the nineteen hundreds and nineteen forties. Commercial development in the area occurred in between the nineteen seventies and two thousands. No buffers or additional screening is needed with the request. Request would not appear to have a negative impact on drainage in the area. The project area is Zone X, protected by levy. The, the nearest, the, there is an eight-inch sewer main and twelve-inch sewer running underneath Blackhawk Street, but no utilities will be impacted by this. The applicant is requesting an appeal to the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on city-owned right-of-way between the street and the property line to allow for vehicle parking on sixteen-by-one-forty-two thousand two hundred and forty square section of city-owned right-of-way along with twelve street. It should also be noted that the applicant will have to apply for a variance to the minimum five-foot setback for a parking area from the property line. The applicant's parking lot extends all the way to the sidewalk and the north property line. The city ordinance four-six-zero-two notes that parking is not permitted in the city right-of-way between the curb and the sidewalk or property line. The code goes on to say that businesses wishing to park in the city right-of-way must obtain a permit from the city council. Previous similar requests were treated as an appeal to the driveway with appeals and, and first gone to the Planning and Zoning Commission before going to the city council. The parking on the property appears to have been expanded around two thousand twelve with additional expansion between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-one. None of which was done in accordance with setbacks, parking regulations. It is apparent vehicles are being placed on the site by, you know, driving over curbs, grats and sidewalks. The applicant appears to be overloading the site with cars. While the display of cars can have some differing designs than a standard parking lot, the loading of and unloading of cars and placement on the site should be follow codes for driveway access points, setbacks, et cetera. The parking lot along the west twelve street is in the driveway and is effectively no longer operating as an entry point. The request went before Planning and Zoning Commission on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. When the request was tabled, staff visited the site January of twenty twenty-two, and there were several cars located within the city right-of-way and along twelve street. When staff visited the site in September of twenty-two, there was only one car parked along twelve street, and there were still approximately three vehicles partially located in the city right-of-way. Code enforcement noted they've received no additional complaints from neighbors, but, you know, there, there were a couple of cars that were ticketed for being parked in the city right-of-way. And, you know, some of this is due to the fact that he has an auto repair business, and some people just drop their cars off and leave, and then call them later and tell them to work on their vehicles. The applicant, you know, recently paved fourteen-by-twenty-two hundred and eighty-foot, square foot area within the city right-of-way of west twelve street without any approval, and has been parking vehicles within the right-of-way on that area and the existing driveway. Staff would note that the section of west twelve street is a low-traffic street and is only two through blocks that run between Driffrisson Street and Blackhawk Street. Most of the through-traffic would appear to use Eleventh Street as it continues past both the Highway two eighteen and the Cedar River. In a similar case, in December of two thousand sixteen, on the west between Bluff Street and Commercial Street, the, the, the staff would note that there appears to be other businesses that utilize the city right-of-way parking purposes along west twelve street, including several on the block, south with parking area in the right-of-way. Staff worked to create a checklist for review requests. The street upon which the parking is proposed is not a major thoroughfare, but is classified as a local street. There's sufficient right-of-way for proper parking designs and pedestrian movements. The approval of the request aids, let's see, infill. Okay, I apologize. Approval of the, of the request aids infill development and smart growth policies in city Waterloo approval will not negatively impact access to major infrastructure utilities in the area. Recognizing there were utilities in many requests with these oversized arterial type lines with uniqueness for access. The request area is properly hard surface drain ingrained to allow for a smooth transition from road to parking and matches or improves road surface. The request is compatible in design with other development areas. Staff would note that allowing parking hard surface in the right-of-way on low-traffic streets in the area would appear to benefit to the development of some of the smaller infill lots located in the area. Many of the lots are smaller in size in Zon M1, which does not, you know, allow for, you know, new residential use. Businesses may be willing to locate on these smaller lots, but have difficulty fitting both their buildings, require parking and storm larder landscaping on these lots along parking in the city right-of-way. In certain situations, is a tool to encourage greater infill development in this area. There is no plating required for this request. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Nazad Jazar-Rubic to appeal, appeal the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on the city-owned right-of-way to allow for parking of vehicles in a fourteen-by-twenty-two hundred and eighty-two square foot area within the right-of-way of force twelve street be denied because the concrete was placed there with, without city approval, and the location is too close to the intersection and could cause a visibility issue. However, staff recommends that the request by Nedved Jazar-Rubic to appeal the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on city-owned right-of-way to allow for sixteen-by-one-nineteen-one thousand nine hundred and four square feet section of parking in the city right-of-way of west twelve street and fourteen hundred Blackhawk Street on the portion of the driveway that previously existed on-site be approved for the following reasons. Approval of the request will give the applicant additional space to store vehicles on a small and difficult site along a low-travel street. Staff needs a more detailed site layout for entry points, exit points, and how vehicles are to be placed on the site to allow for entry and exit in a legal forward direction, excluding the parking within the right-of-way.
Thank you, that was very detailed.
Very detailed staff report, very long, very long.
That said, any questions?
And, yeah, yeah, Ned was supposed to be here, I texted him, let him know to come, but I guess he's not here, so. I don't know what happened.
No, there's just our commissioners and Mr. Bosun.
Okay. Any comments, discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Lystico. You said this was something that's going on already in the area, so have we approved this kind of vacate or variance to the city code and nearby properties?
Well, since this is in my staff report, which follows up, because it's the same request, there has been two previous ones, one on twelfth street and one on thirteenth street.
Okay.
That were approved, yeah.
Yeah, so this one would be out of the ordinary, and it's kind of like, it's like an extended driveway, but part of it happens to be, you know, you know, within city right-of-way.
So if we make a motion, we have to do that whole, that whole thing? If we agree with, with what the staff recommend? I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Steve do that, then.
Okay. All right. All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay. I will make the motion that the request by Nedzad Jzarvic to appeal the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on the city-owned right-of-way to allow for the parking of vehicles in a fourteen-by-twenty-two hundred and eighty square foot area within the Two hundred and eighty square foot area within the street right of way of west twelve street be denied because the concrete was placed there without city approval. And the location is too close to the intersection and could cause a site visibility issue. However, I will motion that, see, this is where we're running into the problem is I think it should be two separate motions. I don't know.
I think you could probably just go, I think I would probably go with the the second paragraph only. And it sort of denies that first part. Would that be correct, staff? Um, yeah, I believe, I believe so. Or basically you just state you're denying the first part and then.
Okay, so I will motion we deny the first part and then we approve the appeal. Let's see, we re, we approved the request by Nedzad Jzarvik. To appeal the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on the city owned right of way to allow for the sixteen foot by nine, one hundred nineteen foot. One thousand nine hundred four square foot section of parking in the city right of way of west wealth street at fourteen hundred Blackhawk Street be. On the portion of the driveway that previously existed on the site be approved for the following reasons. Approval of the request will give the applicant additional space to store vehicles on a small and difficult site along a low traffic street. With the following condition, that staff needs a more detailed site layout for entry points, exit points and how vehicles are to be placed on. Site to allow for entry and exit in an illegal forward direction excluding the parking within the right of way.
Second.
No one wants to read that again.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, state aye.
All right, thank you so much.
Did we lose our people? Did they state aye? Janelle and Steve, what, okay, sorry. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, next. Request by Five Bs LLC Johnny B Construction for an appeal to the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles. From parking on the city owned right of way on West Sixteenth Street located west, across West Sixteenth Street from seventeen twenty eight Blackhawk Street. To allow for approximate twenty foot by one hundred and twenty foot paved parking area between the street and the property line.
This is Dornoff with staff. The applicant is requesting to allow parking and hard servicing along almost the entire front edge of the. City right of way along six, West Sixteenth Street at a southerly corner of Blackhawk Street and West Sixteenth Street. The proposed request could have a negative impact on traffic in the area allowing parking in the right of way would appear to create a situation where cars are forced to back out on the road. The street in question would appear to be a low traffic street with not much through traffic as the only street, there's a street is only two block, two through blocks. And most traffic uses eighteenth street. Engineering will require a paving area. To maintain a twenty foot minimum clear zone from the intersection of the streets, which would require the site plan to be adjusted slightly. You guys want me to go through this whole thing again? I didn't think so. So basically, as I mentioned, previously this was allowed on December sixteenth on West Thirteenth Street. And between bluff and commercial and there was also one on twelve street. Which was actually never actually done. So staff would note that the allowing parking and hard servicing in the right of way, a low traffic streets within this area would benefit the development. A smaller infill lots. The applicant is proposing to build storage buildings on the side. Therefore, staff recommends the appeal to the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on the city owned right of way. Located between the street and property line located the southerly corner of Blackhawk Street and Sixteenth Street. To allow for approximately twenty by twenty, one hundred twenty paved parking area between the street and the property line be approved for the following reasons. The street in question is a low traffic street with other businesses utilizing the right of way. Allowing the, this parking would appear to encourage infill development on a small sized lot that would be difficult to develop due to meeting normal parking standards. And this portion of West Sixteenth is a standard right of way with a sealed code road. Without curb and gutter allowing sufficient room for vehicles to park in the area requested without overhang to the sidewalk or street. Side vision to the following questions. The parking area would need to be graded, drained and hard surface per section ten dash twenty five dash two D of the zoning ordinance. And meet specifications of the city engineer. The parking area would not require, block the sidewalk or street system in the area.
Any questions? And there's still no one in the chambers or on the phone by zoom, so do we have any discussion or a motion by the commission?
Commissioner Laisstico, I guess I would like to point out that this looks to be a little bit more of a proactive approach. And looks a little bit more straightforward.
I'll make a motion. Recommend that the appeal to the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on the city owned right of way. Located between the street and property line located at the southerly corner of Blackhawk Street and West Sixteenth Street. To allow an approximately twenty foot by one hundred twenty foot paved area between the street and the property line be approved for the following reasons. The street in question is a low traffic street with other businesses utilizing the right of way for parking vehicles. Allowing this parking would appear to encourage infill development of a small sized lot that would be difficult to develop due to meeting normal parking standards. This portion of West Sixteenth Street is a standard right of way with a seal coat road without curb and gutter. Allowing sufficient room for vehicles to park in the area requested without overhanging sidewalk or the street. And then be subject to the following conditions that the parking area would need to be graded, drained and hard surface per section ten dash twenty five dash two parentheses D. Of the zoning ordinance and meet specifications of the city engineer. The parking, number two, the parking will, area will not block the sidewalk or street system in the area.
Second, Schoberg.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is re-adoption and changes to the city limits urban revitalization area. Clara to extend the program for another five years and add provisions for both in-home and commercial daycare facilities.
Okay, unfortunately Noel and Eric are not here. However, I know they're. They looked at it, they did not make any changes from what was presented previously.
Do we know why?
I don't. That was in their discussions and.
We discussed this before about the in-home and daycare.
Right. Yeah, that does add the in-home daycare and so long as they're licensed with the state.
Right. So what are we to do about this or just, is this just informing us?
Um, once again asking for your recommendation.
Is this a recommendation directly to city council?
Yeah, it goes to city, city council and requires notice to all property owners affected it. So we have to mail out ten thousand so letters.
Not two hundred and fifty feet, huh?
No, no, it's the entire, except for the Cura area, which is separate. All the other property owners will get a notice.
So the one that was brought before though, was that the Cura and not the Clara?
Cl- that was the Clara.
Which one was tabled though? Was that the?
That was Clara. This one was tabled.
Are you sure? Well, because this one does include.
Talking about the daycares as much last time. I think we were just talking about construction, single family homes.
We talked about it though, yeah.
And discussion on financing rates and whatnot.
Because the tax exemption on the.
We talked about three years versus six years.
Right, but. Because this document says that what's included in this one is the ten year and the three year. Is that right? On page one fifty one. Now it says not applicable to Clara. Oh, is this like one that's, is this for the Cura?
Correct.
This is wording for the Cura, not the Clara.
Well, it's the same wording, basically, except there's differences between what each one covers. That's why it says not applicable to the Clara.
So if we approve this today, it, it remains only the three year hundred percent exemption option. No other options are being added.
Correct.
Yeah, because, yeah, well, the Clara is, is citywide where, where Cura is just the, the core areas of Waterloo and. And so, so this is just, yeah, the, the citywide one.
But the question we had last time, reason why we tabled is to see if we could consider adding in the ten year exemption. In addition to the three year. And that's the thing that they just didn't discuss or.
They discussed, I mean, there were. And I'm not sure why they decided not to add it. I know there was complications just trying to get it done. It, in a reasonable amount of time since at this point it's because of the lack of a meeting, last couple meetings. It's to the point now where we're not even going to get this approved before it expires, the old one expires. So it had to be retroactive to whenever, to January first, whenever it gets approved. Because we got to, there's a thirty day window where we have to give notice and then a sixty day window and then.
So if we wanted to add in something else in the future, when is the next opportunity for this group to do that? In five years?
Correct.
Could you agree to extend it for one year at this point?
You can do what, I mean, basically what you do is recommend, so you could recommend that it's done for one year.
Yeah, I, I would, I would say you probably want to do it for more than one year because it's just going to be confusing for developers. I mean, you know, that way you have, because we always renewed it every five years, so we always have that development horizon. If you just do it for a year. You know, then, yeah, I mean, it's always been renewed every five. I just wanted to add that.
Last time when it was renewed, wasn't it renewed indefinitely and then?
Just city council voted that down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or I believe it was city council, but I know that they were proposing that it didn't happen.
Last time, was the discussion at the last meeting, uh, wasn't it based on three years and then sticker shock of taxes kicking in?
Plus the ten year might be more attractive to developers.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we approve part of the changes and then make a recommendation on this section? Since it's going to city council anyway?
That's what I get nervous about is if we pick certain parts of this. And send it on, I think city council might alter this anyway.
Yeah.
I'm, I would like to create stable policy on it.
And just a note on the number of years, the first couple of years, times it was three years, then it went to five years. So, but they were looking for five years again, so.
Cody, can you speak a little bit more, say a little bit more about what you were just saying?
So if we take one part of this as far as the provisions for the in-home and commercial daycare facilities. Which I think no one's had any expressed concern over. We're fine with that and we approve that. That's good. However, I also think that the policy as a whole needs to move on. And if we get too much in the weeds on the numbers and time period and percentages. I don't know if we'll ever come to an exact agreement as a group or we have a hundred percent yes on this particular issue.
Well, I know that. Mr. Boson has been wanting to propose a change to this for, for a little while anyway. I don't want to speak for him. But, and then I know they're pulling the grow committee back together again to discuss this, correct? As part of what.
Previously got them together, I believe. Do you know Tim off the top of your head? Okay.
I mean, it's, it's a little concerning that we wouldn't be able to do anything else or change anything for five more years, like.
I guess I have a, a question. If city council does change the time period or the percentages. Would that be something that comes back to us then?
No.
No.
No, they're the final decision maker. I mean, this is just a recommendation. So I mean, oh, I was gonna say, I mean, you can recommend stuff, but they could change it again any, I mean.
Yeah.
Are they looking for a recommendation? Like if we just said, we say yes to this, but we'd like them to look at the years and things. Could they do that?
Yeah, I mean, you can say that and.
Not that we just pass it forward without a consideration that we kind of feel strongly around the exemption being looked at. I mean.
Yeah, you can put that in.
I like a suggestion that we say we, we recommend approval, but we, we'd like to recommend also these changes, these sections if possible.
Yeah.
Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, right, exactly.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. You volunteering for the motion then?
Well. Yeah.
I'm trying to think of what motion I'm making.
Mind involving that.
Oh, go ahead.
So you're suggesting changes to these sections, so are you going to be specific on what you want the city council to look at then? Or what you're going to want them to?
I can throw a motion together and throw something out there and see what happens.
I just know that with the timeframe, you know, a lot of developers look at this and if they. See it expiring and may make them a little nervous in a way.
Right.
Just to make sure that.
But at some point we have to be able to make some decisions about changes to these things.
Sure.
That actually should help developers. I would imagine that we're trying to offer more options, not less, or better options.
Thought her initial suggestions had meaningful thought behind them, so.
Yeah. And you said it's retroactive, so it's, so if it was even February or something before it was approved and it was approved, it would be retroactive to January.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
So it's maybe kicking a couple of months down the road, but they still get it, you know, it's not.
But that could also affect the developer's decisions too, because they don't know until February whether it's going to get approved or not. So the sooner we get it approved, the better.
But if we made a recommendation that they add additional provisions in, and that's the recommendation that council's considering. I can't imagine the developer would be too nervous about that, but maybe they would be.
Yeah, I think you just need to really, if you're suggesting some changes or you want to focus on something, it has to be clarified.
I think, I think last time a lot of the developers showed up. It was, it was actually, I'm pretty sure it was on the news and there is a decent amount of builders and developers here.
Yes, I recall there was, yes.
Just concerned about.
Yes.
I, I think Councilman Boson, are you, might be wanting to make a comment, is that correct?
Yeah, I've been trying to e- edge into here just a little bit. I, I, I'm still proposing, proposing the six years at fifty percent. Now, if that's something that, that when that comes up before the council. I, I wouldn't have a problem with the three years at a hundred percent and the option of six years at fifty percent. Added, added into that because like I say, I talked about having tax money coming in upfront. Uh, not having sticker shock up from the buyer for three years down the road and all of a sudden their, their house payment goes up, you know. A hundred dollars or more than that, eight, nine hundred dollars a month. So, and then when you, when you were talking about that ten year that wasn't brought back in here. That had to do with multifamily dwellings where Noel had proposed a ten year at a hundred percent tax abatements for multifamily dwellings like Cedar Rapids does. And then in an email that Noel sent out to council, he has pulled that from this. Uh, because he didn't have, based on, on input from council members he talked to, he didn't have the support.
Okay, but what do you think about the ten year graduated as, as in the Cura? Do you think there would be support for that as well as?
Yeah, there's always been support for that.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's the, the core area and all we're trying to do is. I mean, it's, it's, it's the core area, and all we're trying to do is, is, is build those neighborhoods up. We'll, we'll never lower our property taxes until we build from within on our neighborhoods and, and we have more investment in these, in the core area of Waterloo.
Yeah, so.
If you talk to the people over, over, across the street, they're going to tell you that the only way we're going to get more tax value is to increase the value in certain neighborhoods, and most of those are in the, in the core area that, that fall under Kura.
Yeah, so do you think there would be value in suggesting the ten-year graduated also for the CLURA in addition to the six-year fifty percent, three-year hundred percent, give multiple options?
I, I don't, I don't know about the ten-year, uh, I'm not sure, I, I was just trying to, uh, uh, come up with an option on the six years. I see what you're saying now is having, having CLURA, having the option of, of ten years. It, it, it's tough to get people to, sometimes even stay in a house for ten years. What, what, what we're seeing right now, and, and, and it, it happens, people are, are building a new house, and they're staying in it for three years, and close to that third year, they're building another house, and then they're moving out and they're staying ahead of the tax.
Right, but options just mean options, so they could still pick, they could pick what option might work best for them, right?
Not if they're just moving on and.
Correct.
I mean, but when they build it, they get to pick, are they going to take the three-year hundred percent, the six-year fifty percent, or the ten-year graduated, right? They, the person picks that, right?
Said they move out in three years.
Well, right, right now, they just get the three-year hundred percent.
Right.
Oh.
Right, so if we add options, they have options.
I guess, I, if I were in your shoes, or maybe I'm getting, I might get volunteered for it, I would probably amend the, the provisions for in-home and commercial daycare facilities, and then put an emphasis on Section I to, uh, add a six-year fifty percent.
Right.
Schedule and a ten-year, uh, partial exemption schedule.
Yeah, that, that would be the recommendation.
For Kura.
Because we had.
For CLURA.
Oh, for CLURA. Yeah, because it says except from CLURA, okay.
Was that a motion? If that's a motion, I'll.
I'm going to make that motion, as long as everyone understood that.
Yeah.
Alan, you said you, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, I'll second that.
Perfect.
All right.
I did a lot of asking around about the six-year and, um, a ton of positive feedback. A lot of people would have done that, especially people that are, I know it's kind of speculation on whether or not people, when people will move, but statistically, it's every five to seven years, people are selling their homes. But a lot of people that are building in Waterloo, it's a lot of, it's their end game, you know, and goal to be there. So I think like the six-year, I think that would be a really gradual way into, um, you know, see, like, like David said, uh, or Dave said, uh, that sticker shock, and I think there's a lot of people, there's a lot of complaint out there, and I asked a lot of real estate agents, obviously, it's, uh, field I'm in, and then, and then, um, a lot of people that have built, and they said they would have gone with that six-year, and.
Right. And I think that it would help, it helps the city and the county to, the city especially for the revenue and for budgeting. They start to know earlier when money's going to come in.
We could also see in the future if the six-year option becomes more favored and if the utilization of the three-year option kind of falls off, and then we go back to a two-option system or something for simplicity.
And I, I think one of the main things that we've seen is a lot of people are upset, like when they forget to file on time or, or something like that. I'm sure you guys deal with that quite, all the time. I was in Noel's office the other day and, and had that, and it's, um, and I think when, when people are dealing with that and they're like, why do I have no, you know, or why are my taxes, you know, not completely gone? And then I think it just eliminates a lot of issues, because I mean, yeah. Seeing, they want to see zero on there, and people get used to that.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yep.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If you can get a motion. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
And just clarification, Cody, you wanted to add the stuff with the daycares, because it sounded like you were amending it, which would have amended what was proposed, which we're proposing that. We just got to, you know, make everything is.
All right, final agenda item, request by the City of Waterloo to approve an amendment to the Rath Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan in the Tiff District to enlarge the area included therein, amendment number three.
Okay, well, there's a memo from Eric in the packet, but our real staff is proposing to amend the Rath Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan in Tiff District by addition, additional areas in the Tiff, to enter the Tiff boundary into the update projects and project budgets included in the plan and include other updates to the plan. So basically, what they are doing is adding in the area with A-line EDS, where they're building a new, this building, and they're probably going to build some more buildings, and also the area covered by, um, I forget, Blackhawk, and there's some other areas owned by PCI, and a little section down here, south, southwest of Lafayette.
The color-coded map is currently up, if that's easier.
Yeah, since, I'm trying to look on the black and white, so.
It's kind of the, what is that, purply?
Yeah, it's a purply.
Lavender, parmesan.
I forget which color they say in GIS, but.
And this is designed to just promote more development in that whole area.
We're actually start, seeing a lot of development in that area, start, you know, it's become, starting to become more popular, and we're seeing a lot of residential development to the east, you know, Habitat's built a couple ho, three homes over there, and, and we've actually seen like seventeen homes, so there's a lot happening in that part of Maywood area that hasn't happened for years, so it's good to see.
Any questions?
Is Dubuque Road being used as some form of a connector to that little lavender chunk up there?
Yes, you have to use a, yeah.
Yeah, we, we've seen that with, I think, San Martin for a while or something.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion, or? I can, I can make the motion to approve the request by the City of Waterloo, um, to approve an amendment to the Rath Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan in Tiff District to enlarge the area included therein. Amendment number three. Is there a second?
Second, Shirk.
Any discussion? All those in favor, state aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Any other discussion items? The, just note that the next meeting got moved to November first. I know we had emails about that, but just note that for your calendars. Otherwise, we have a motion to adjourn. Also move. Second?
Second, Schoberg.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
He opposed.
Thank you, we are adjourned.